All right, I will call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting for September 27th.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Renode?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Gracious Father God, we thank you for the day you have given us, we thank you for many blessings. I pray, God, your direction upon this meeting, Lord, and we just thank you for everything that you do for us each and every day. And, Lord, just bless each one here today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. That brings us to Correspondence and Organizational Business. Anything to report?
I don't have anything, Chair.
All right. Is there any public comment? Our consent agenda, which today includes considering approving the minutes from our meeting on September 20th. There are no claim vouchers or tax change orders, but there's a payroll for the period of August 21 through September 20, 2017, in the amount of $1,144,676.90. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. That brings us to our Items of Business, the first of which is to consider a rezoning application. Good morning, Larry.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you've indicated, the first item that I have for you this morning is a consideration of a rezoning that was considered by the Planet Commission earlier this year. The Planet Commission has forwarded a recommendation to you for the approval of rezoning approximately five acres from an A1 zoning district to the RE residential estate zone. The purpose for that rezoning is to allow for the sale of the existing residents along with the five acres that be sufficient to encompass the onsite sanitation facilities. The applicants would retain the remaining 43 acres for agricultural purposes, and it would satisfy the minimum lot size and other requirements for the A1 zoning district. Based on the Planet Commission's recommendation, we would ask that the county commissioners adopt a resolution approving the rezoning and direct staff to amend the official county zoning map accordingly.
Any questions for Larry about this rezoning application?
Is it typical to have a lagoon on five acres, or is that...
It is today. That was amended roughly five years ago. We found that the 10 acres, which had been the requirement, was a little bit overkill because it left a lot of parcels that were not being maintained very well. But five acres would be sufficient, but you will have to be careful on how you design those so that it does meet all the setback requirements.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the rezoning application?
I'll make the motion that we approve rezoning application 1707-1509.
Second.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Second item of business is to consider approving a financing bid for our P-25 radio system.
Yeah, last week we discussed this. We had our bid opening back on the 13th of September. At our discussion last week, I told you that it would be necessary for me to meet with the townships and the fire districts to discuss this, because originally we had a meeting with them whereby we discussed what we were putting in our RFP and how I was requesting that each entity receive the same financing terms. And as we discussed last week, none of the three bids accomplished that. Having said that, US Bank gave us a fantastic bid, and the terms are good for everyone. On Monday evening, Janet and I, as well as Tom, met with all of them, discussed it. And not only were there not any issues, I would say they were all very, very pleased with the terms that we've got. So I think there will only be potentially a couple that might need some assistance from us on the annual payments, because when you're planning on a 10-year term and it's cut to five, obviously, you know, your annual payment's going to be a lot larger. But the meeting went very well. So with that in mind, I would emphatically recommend that the Board accept US Bank's financing bid for these radios.
And assistance potentially means that for some of these small entities where $4,000 or $5,000 is a large sum of money, $4,000 or $5,000 being what their payments could have potentially increased by being cut from 10 years to five, would be us maybe stepping in and help bridge that so they could more or less pay it back over a longer period than five years, but not certainly more than 10.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. And when Janet and I budgeted for this, we did it based on Motorola's terms, which were 4%. So given that we've got a bid at 2.5, I mean, with that difference, we've easily allowed ourselves enough to do this should the need arise. So I think we'll be in good shape.
Is that the recommendation then, is to go with the option A over B?
Yeah, it is, because most all of the townships acknowledged at the meeting that they plan on paying theirs off before five years anyway. Option A allows for a prepayment with no penalty at all after 12 months. So interest rates just a touch higher, but I think will come out, or the respective entities will come out ahead on option A.
Questions for Derek? We've studied this quite a bit in the past, the last several meetings.
Would give you options down the road, too, if you wanted to package it with something else and look at refinancing something if you wanted to package it with another project or something to get better interest rates or something, too, I guess.
Yeah, potentially.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve Financing Package A from US Bank Corp. for the P-25 radio system?
I'll make the motion that we approve the financing from US Bank Corporation. Option A, as you read?
Second.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Third item of business is potentially entering into an agreement with AT&amp;T relating to the new radio system.
Yeah, there are going to be a number of these kind of ancillary agreements related to the radio system. This one is with AT&amp;T. I've got Tom here this morning to discuss it in more detail should the Board require that. It's my understanding that this agreement, the crux of it, is for a connection between our main tower site to some kind of core in Wichita. Tom, if you want to elaborate.
That's correct. In order for our system to work, we have to connect to the state core. The reason why we're doing that is as a cost savings on our part, the core is right around $500,650,000 plus SUA 2 costs going down the road, so it was not feasible for us to do it. So it was more feasible for us to connect to the state system. That's why we kind of did it. So in order to do that, we have to have a what they call point-to-point connection. That means a lonely connection between us and the state, and that's what this is paying for, is that connection between us. And it's a real-time, real-time connection, even though it doesn't take much. I think it's, I think our requirements are like 5 meg, which aren't much, but it's got to be real-time so we don't have anybody else lagging our system. So when you push that button, talk, it's almost instantaneous.
We had a couple other options. One was microwave, and the other one was running our fiber network out there.
So there's two connections that we've got to do. We've got to do one connection from dispatch to the tower, and the next connection has to be from the tower to the state. And this is only covering the tower to the state. The microwave, we're still going to go ahead with, we're looking at going ahead with the microwave link from the 15th Street Tower over here to the tower. I think right now that's still our most cost-effective solution on that, and our return on investment will be much greater. There is another way we could bootleg around, but I don't think it's going to be near as, I think there's our Penn City for failure if we start trying to bootleg it around loops and microwave around shots around places to get it into somewhere else. I think the absolute sure way to do it is this AT&amp;T connection.
For the education of the Board, Colt mentioned a fiber option. That is from dispatch to our tower, correct?
It's going to be, this is going to be a fiber, this will be a fiber run. We call it a T1 line, but AT&amp;T has come back and said it'll be fiber. It'll be a fiber shot from, but they're going to segregate off a section of that fiber line just for us, real-time connection from the tower to Wichita.
So the cost, there's a scale here. What's our cost?
Yeah, our cost, Colt, will be a monthly total of $861.58. The basic fee is $514.80, and then there's a 2-meg fee of $346.78. So our three-year contract, $861 a month for this link.
And we knew about this. This is part of the cost that we figured in earlier. This is not a new thing or nothing that came up.
It's not. We budgeted for this. So yeah, this is nothing out of the ordinary.
The only cost that they won't tell us is the construction costs, and they won't tell that until we have a signed contract. If they, after we sign the contract and the construction costs are too high, we can cancel the, we can cancel the contract and go to somewhere else.
Did we price running our fiber, or I guess this fiber from here out to there?
We haven't done that.
But this is from the tower?
This is from the tower to Wichita.
You can't...
I don't know if we want to pay the price to run fiber from the tower to Wichita.
From here to Wichita, but as I understood, there was an option to maybe somehow run it a line from here to there.
And there's, we've talked to the city a little bit about that, because they're running fiber out to Proximity Park, being able to turn the corner and go west, and I think that's kind of down the road right now. Right now, I think our construction costs for the microwave, using the current city and county fiber to the tower, to the water tower here, and then shooting it over, I think we're talking, construction's cost is about $12,000 or $15,000, which our return on investment will be, we'll make that back in about three years. If we went with an AT&amp;T line, which would be costing us about the same, $1,000 a month. Construction costs, I don't think they'll be that high unless they do something, because we know that there's fiber out there at that tower, and we know that they're already running connections in Wichita. So hopefully, it'll be just more than pulling a wire out, plugging it in, and charging me $100 bucks or whatever it is cost they're going to call.
Questions for Tom? Would like to make a motion to approve entering into the master agreement with AT&amp;T for necessary Ethernet services related to the county's new P-25 radio project.
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you.
I will second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
Fourth item of business is consider entering into a contract with Janet Paddock for services as the county finance officer.
Yeah, this is an item that I don't think will come as any surprise to the Board. Back when I agreed to become the administrator and also the counselor, one of the terms of my agreement was that the county would hire a finance officer. We advertised for that position, solicited applications, received several applications. The determination was made that none of the applicants were desirable. In the meantime, Janet has been assisting me with a wide array of finance matters. We all know she assisted with the budget, but that's really, I mean, one of the many things. This very radio financing project we just talked about, she put a lot of work in on that. I just, I, it wouldn't behoove any of us for me to sit here and go through every finance-related item that Janet assists with, but given her initiative in doing that, given the rapport that exists between her and I, her historical knowledge of the budget, the feedback we got from department heads and other elected officials on the budget, I think she would be the ideal choice for this position. You've got a contract in front of you. You have questions about that. To be clear, she'll remain the county clerk. Having said that, we are not transferring any duties to the clerk's office. The contract subordinates Janet to me with regard to all of these finance officer duties, and the duties are clearly delineated in there. So she will still run everything up through me, and of course, I'll run it through you. Should Janet cease to be the county clerk, the next county clerk will have no right to perform any of these duties, will have no right to any of the compensation. I can't emphasize enough that this isn't a contract with her office, it's a contract with her. So I would stand for any questions that you have, and I'm sure Janet would as well.
These are, of course, duties that are beyond what statutorily required of a clerk. They're separate and outside of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Things she doesn't do.
And if you look at the statutory duties of the clerk, and I have them here, and it's primarily what you're seeing here today. She had to keep her office at the county seat, attend meetings of the commissioners, keep the seals, records, and papers of the commissioners, sign records of the proceedings, have general powers of a notary public. Of course, Janet serves as the elections officer, so, you know, she could explain far better than me the work she puts in with regard to elections. But no, this is for finance officer duties, which we've put in here as budget development, accounting, auditing, the development of long-range financial goals, and other duties as assigned. So there's a pretty clear difference between what she's doing today and what we're asking her to do as finance officer. Having said that, there's a lot of logic in having her do it, because she, I mean, as administrator, if I need budget information, that's the office that I'm calling, so she's kind of the keeper of that. So yeah, I highly recommend that we do this. I think to further elaborate, we haven't talked about the cost of this. When we advertised for a finance officer, we advertised, I believe, $60,000 plus benefits, which are roughly a $20,000 value. Again, I didn't, we didn't get applicants really with the combination of education or experience that we were looking for. I think we would have to bump that by at least 10, probably more. So let's say it's 75, $20,000 in benefits, that's a $95,000 expense to the county. Janet's already an employee, we're already paying her benefits. The contract amount is $25,000. So you're looking at a potential $70,000 difference there. If you look back to our prior administrator, when he was here and when the two of us started, we started at the same amount that, and this is three years ago, the same amount that you would be paying for me and the finance officer today. So in three years, our expenses haven't increased at all. So fiscally, it's, I think it's a no-brainer. Certainly, if you have questions, Janet and I are here to answer that.
It says the payments are at intervals such as other county employees, that's monthly?
Right.
Have there been any different relationship with this position in the county treasurer? Or dealing with finances, what the treasurer does?
There is, and in fact, when we put our finance officer job description together, I worked pretty thoroughly both with the clerk and the treasurer to make sure that there wasn't any overlap or that the treasurer didn't feel as if this finance officer was infringing upon her duties, and that's certainly not the case. So that's a great question, Roy, and yeah, we worked with Debbie Huff pretty extensively on crafting this, so I think we're good there.
Well, I have a couple of questions. One, you talked about the statutes and the budget. We did know that a lot of counties, the clerk already is involved in preparing the budget, so I think that is something that some places a clerk already does, but just not here, I guess, at this time. The main question I have, last year when we had Janet do the budget for us, or work with you on the budget, and we gave, I think it was $5,000 of bonus for doing that. Part of the reason that we talked about was how many hours that Janet stayed after hours and worked on that budget and put in the deal. And we're going to add this much more. How are you going to do this if you were having to stay late after you do the clerk duties to take care of that, just the budget? Are you going to be able to work all this in?
Absolutely. You know, just the busy...
And I know, just interrupt you, but I know we threw that on y'all once you had not the opportunity to really plan for that last year. I understand that part of it. So you kind of got that thrown on you at the last minute with your duties, but I just want to make sure that the clerk duties aren't going to suffer because of these extra duties, or vice versa.
The busy times of the year are not, are not the same with the finance duties as with the clerk and election duties. Like, right now, I will, I will probably be spending 60 to 80 hours a week just doing clerk duties to get all the tax functions done that are statutorily my duties, and to get all the election duties done that are my duties as far as being the county clerk and the county election officer. The finance duties for right now are more spread out, just answering day-to-day questions on budgets to different department heads, and answering emails as they come in from like our bond counsel. And like, I've been in contact quite a bit with Tyler from Kutek Rock right now on working on the radio financing bids. But, you know, those are, you know, a 30-minute conversation in a day, answer some emails, you know, and I can do those things in the evening as well if need be, but the majority of the duties right now revolve around the clerk and election job. We're talking about heavier on the beginning of the year. I mean, obviously, this would change when we sell bonds and stuff, but I don't foresee there being any, any conflict of time, and I'm certainly willing to put in the time for you guys.
And if I can interject here, to speak to your comments, Rick, I talked to Janet about assisting me with the budget prior to even accepting this position administrator, so I didn't throw anything on her at the last minute. This is something that we discussed well in advance, so just to clarify that for anyone whom I, this was a part of a plan that we, I mean, I didn't think I would have a finance officer by the time that, so if you feel as if that was thrown on you at the last minute, then I certainly...
Well, then maybe the thrown on was the wrong words, but I do know that part of the reasoning for the bonus was the fact that she was staying a lot of extra hours from after work to do this, so...
So that would, those services would all be encompassed in this contract going forward?
And not questioning, no doubt in my mind, Janet can do the job and do it very well. She showed that on the budget and some of the other stuff she's worked with. I mean, qualification is not a question at all in my mind. And the other thing I'll throw out there before, and then let Randy get in there, was when I looked at this, originally I felt it was assisting you on finances and so forth, and the number I had in my head was 20,000.
A lot of those questions that are comments that Rick just made, and you said about the phone calls and stuff, I thought, a lot of that stuff, I would assume they would call you, you're going to be the keeper of a lot of the budget information anyway. Is that, I mean, am I mistaken on that, or?
No, I've never, before, before this time, I've never taken any of those calls. You know, when I first came on, Lisa handled all those. John handled them all after that. These have only been recent things that I've taken on. I mean, I'm happy to answer their questions and provide them documents when they need it, but these are questions about, you know, like, we need to review these contracts. We need to make sure that we're fitting within our debt limits. We're, you know, and me keeping my eyes on those things all the time. That would normally be someone else that would do that. When, it's my understanding when those, when we shifted to an administrator-type situation, that all those, all those duties went to the administrator.
And they do. I mean, that historically have been administrator duties, however, and that just, I, I guess that's exactly, that exemplifies what I'm talking about when I say that she has been basically our de facto finance officer, and she's taken the initiative to do that, and I've, you know, you talk about your Tyler Ellsworths and your David Artaberrys. I mean, I've told them, you know, why don't you get in contact with Janet, talk to her about it? And again, I can't praise her enough. She has happily done that without the expectation of anything. And so all the more reason why I'm, you know, I think this is a great idea for us, so she's done a great job.
If we hire this person to come on then to do this, is that going to eliminate any other outside contracted people that we may have had to consult with during this time to get a budget done? I mean, Rodney, is he one that was brought in and given some money, or some other people, maybe?
Yeah, we paid Rodney $1,000, basically, to get our state budget forms in order. And yeah, my expectation of the position, and I think Janet understands this, would be that she learned, and I think Janet today could probably do that, but yeah, I think that would basically cut Rodney out of the picture in terms of, I don't believe there was anyone else we've really contracted with. I mean, Janet and I have handled the rest of it, so...
I think when I first talked to you on the phone, that I think the 20 figures and one that I had said was on my mind, whatever we had talked about. And I, like Rick, I have no question about Janet's capabilities or her value to us, and the smoothness and the confidence department heads would have in that, I think that's critical. But on the other side, I look at the fact of, all right, we're in this position, and this is not a person who is not doing another full-time job, so forth, or are we setting ourselves up to look like, whoa, man, we're putting out this much money to do this, and is that going to look the way we should go? So I just have a question on, and we have 5,000, and I don't know exactly what part of that 5,000, okay, that was just to do the budget, it's done, it's over with. That's where we were at there. Are we starting out on September, whatever it said, you know, September?
The October 1.
First day of October as the beginning of this year. Is that where we wanted to start with that, or is that 5,000 not, maybe we should start at January 1, or, you know what I'm saying? I'm just trying to figure out exactly where the overlap of the first 5,000 and this is as well.
Well, and I would, and that's a great question, and I would consider that $5,000 payment for services on the 2018 budget, which is completed. This amount, whatever amount the two of, the Board and Janet agrees on, would include next year's budget. So this contract doesn't contemplate the work that she's already done. It's one year's worth of work moving forward. And I think the start date, I'm not sure. I mean, certainly, if the Board has a strong feeling, we could make that whatever, but I don't think...
This would kind of be the most logical date, better, I guess, or, because you're going to be dealing with cash carryovers late year, budget middle of the year, so either now or early spring. So you obviously wouldn't want a contract that came up right in the middle of one of those two things.
I understand your concern about, you know, you guys obviously want to save as much money as possible, and I definitely do, too, but I feel like 25,000 is not out of line when we're talking about, you know... when we're talking about, you know, if we were going to get someone for this position, potentially having to pay them a $75,000 salary and another $20,000 in benefits. So, I mean, you're getting really close to $100,000 there. And you're potentially talking about contracting with me to do whatever it is in the realm of finance that you asked me to do for a quarter of what you would have to pay another person. I, I just think, you know, economies of scale tell you that, that 25,000, which is a quarter of what you might pay someone else is, is a great savings on that.
Well, I, I'd just like to say, first off, when we contracted with Derek, we, we had an agreement. And we were going to give him the tools that were necessary for him to be able to do his job and, and to make the county functional and to do the best job that he could in that position and to be able to delegate those responsibilities that he felt needed to be delegated. I think personally, I think we need to give him the tools that he requested to begin with. That was part of his agreement. The second thing that I guess is, is on my mind is, is that when you hire somebody, you can look at resumes all you want to, but unless you've worked with them, you have no idea how they're actually going to function. We got to see how you functioned Janet this last year going through the budget process. And I think all of us were really pleased at how, how it came out and how easy it really flowed. There's a lot to be said for that. I'm not upset about the $5,000 difference personally. I think it'd be good money spent so that Derek can function on the things that need to be functioned on to make this organization the best it can be.
I think Derek and I work really well together. And you know, you're, you know, your continuity of service that, you know, you guys would expect is, is there. And rather than bringing in someone new where they have to learn our systems, learn our processes, build relationships with all the department heads. I already have those relationships. I'm already working with the department heads. I'm already working closely with Derek on a lot of projects. So I, I just.
It could be six months to a year before that really got established well.
Well, and that's, and that's on top of, you know, potentially two to three months to probably hire someone, so.
I, I think, and it's hard to articulate exactly. I want to do the best that I can, but just the feel that exists is just, it's great. Like she, she takes initiative, yet she runs things through me. Like I, I can trust that she's not going to go off half-cocked and, and make a decision without. I mean, she runs everything through me, like just the, the trust is there. And the trust's been being built for three years. I mean, I've been working with her a lot. I mean, it started when I was just the counselor. We worked on a lot of open records requests together. And the rapport's just been building since then. And I, you guys did see it during the budget process. Like it's just, it, it's hard to quantify, but the connection is just very seamless, which is why I'm, I'm very, very comfortable with, with that. And I also think, I think it sends a good message to the organization and to the taxpayers. I mean, when we go through budgets with each of our individual departments, we talk about, you know, making sure we're being fiscally responsible and given the tax lid and the climate that we're living in, trying to stay flat. I mean, what we're doing is we're utilizing the resources that we have within the organization. It just so happens to be that I think she is by far the best option, but it's also the most economical and efficient option. So if we have department heads or elected to want to continue expanding their budget, the board can say, look, look at what we've done at the very top. We've combined the administrator and the counselor. We've got a clerk who's also performing finance duties. I mean, it's a, a very efficient use of dollars. And I think we've already seen that we, we're not losing anything. I mean, we're, we're able to perform very well, so.
We have a system and operation that works very well, maybe as well as it's ever functioned. And it just so happens that it's, our next option's more expensive. This just happens to be at least expensive. But regardless, I think it's the best, best operations as far as.
I'm not questioning some, some of that. But comparing, my problem is comparing the money against a full-time finance officer. This is not a full-time finance officer. It's going to be part-time. We've got a full-time clerk doing part-time finance officer. That's where. So to me, comparing against their salary and against their benefits, if a full-time finance officer came in, he's going to be putting 40 hours a week or more into the finances. This is not going to be 40 hours a week into the finances. So I don't think comparing what a full-time one against this money is, is really appropriate. But you know, that's, I'm not going to argue over the 5,000 either. But I just think that we're, we're not a full-time finance officer with this. So what's the fair amount?
And I.
One, one thing maybe I would, I would suggest, and I, you know, Colt mentioned the April or the middle, the spring or whatever else, maybe if we changed the contract to start January 1, if that would make the calendar year different than whatever else. If, if that's an issue point that would be, the, the $5,000 is done through this budget part and do that. I don't know if you see that as a problem or not a problem or whatever else. I mean, I don't, I'm just asking.
I guess help me understand what we gain by doing it.
I think we're saying that the months of October, November, December then are covered by the 5,000 that's already been paid as opposed to starting this position compensation-wise.
But that was to prepare the budget. That wasn't to see, that wasn't to oversee the implementation of the budget and all of those things.
And I understand, excuse me for interrupting. I understand what you're saying and then, but you know, you just said about the, the next month or two, what your major functions are. And all of this is obviously certain times of the year, it's going to be more than others. You're really going to be hit hard at certain points on your clerk's part and other times it would be the budget part. But it seemed that that part of the budget right now is accomplished and day-to-day operations with your department heads and what you're doing and human resources. I know there's going to be some things that come up or questions, but it sounded like that was, this is the downside maybe of the budget or the finance officer. May, maybe that's not correct. That's what I was looking at.
Me, it sounds maybe to be crash. But when you're playing, playing a game with a kid and they want to stop, they want their turn, then they don't want to play one. They don't want to wait for your turn. But yeah, when it's my turn, let's, you know, I'll go first and then you go, then I go last and we quit. You, you know, so I guess we're not going to pay you more when you're working 80 hours, but we're not going to pay you less when you're working 10 hours towards this. So I guess.
That, that's, you know, it's not that. You can't divide that because she doesn't know when she's going to get hit with water. It's just like having the budget part, the, the radio thing right now is a big deal. The proximity park, when we were doing that, those things are going to come up that we may know they're going to be coming or they may not going to be coming. It doesn't change your job, that Derek's going to get paid more during this time or less during that time. It's just your job nature of your beast, you know, it fluctuates.
Right, but in, in regards to starting this in January, you know, you guys just approved financing bids for US Bank and to go through that process of making sure that, that that's all complete and we have the money there and we pay for the system. So we're working with Motor Roland on, you know, getting all the payments made and, and making sure that all of our requirements are met there financially. We're working with US Bank to make sure that we get all of our paperwork filed. That we're also working with Kutek Rock to make sure that our lease agreement with US Bank fits within the parameters of staying within our bank-qualified funding. So to say that we have less duties right now, it is accurate. We have less duties right now as far as the finance. But there is still plenty of duties to be done right now with working on the radio project. The proximity park project still doesn't end. As we continue to have talks with David Artaberry about what's coming up next year and what all we're going to have to do to, to say that we don't have any as much right now is true. But we still have a lot that's on our plate as far as financing work to be done.
I, I guess my question would come back, whether it was August 1 or September 1 or October 1 or November 1, what would have changed in what you guys are doing? I mean, I assume nothing has changed other than the fact that you are being stressed more than what you would be doing. And Derek's relying on somebody to do something that's outside of what their job description maybe is.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I don't know what would change. I, I guess what I am looking at is I do not want the board to take advantage of Janet. And the board paid Janet $5,000. It was $5,000 for assistance with the 2018 budget. I don't recall there being any other discussion about other duties. Janet has played a big role in the radio finance. She will continue to have a big role because there are all these townships that are going to need to work with the bank. Janet does their budget. I mean, she is the logical liaison between the two. I, and, and I, I still don't quite understand what we lose in terms of just starting that contract today and whatever amount that you all can agree upon.
We're also not going back and paying her for the radio finance, things that she did, quite frankly, because they need to be done.
Yeah, we're not.
Well, you did do all the radio financing, but I, I saw Janet take a, a lead role in that. Not to say you didn't do anything, but you also have 240 employees and personnel matters and litigation that's ongoing through the county and, I mean, a large other, so I guess.
I know that you don't look at it as the finance officer, we're not discussing the clerk, that's already done. I just have to get there where the clerk and assisting you on finances, are we going to put that at a salary that's making more than we got department heads? It's got 30 and 40 people under them and stuff. That's where I'm having a little bit of trouble with the numbers. Is, are we going to put this person at a salary that's above some of our department heads that got numerous, lot more people under them and lot of things under them? That's, that's where I'm having a little trouble. That's why I'm looking at the 20. Not questioning the numbers on that. I just felt that that puts that person at a salary that's in the area with, with those department heads. That's where I'm looking.
I agree. You're looking at, at least 80 to get somebody in the door. I mean, the hospital, somewhat similar, they're looking at well, well north of 100 to get a good finance person there. If we were to do that, do we need a full-time one? I think it costs that to get them in the door, but would we truly utilize them a hard 40 hours week after week? Or do we need a 25-hour person that works hard? I mean.
I, I, I don't think we need, well, and first of all, I, I, before I answer that, I think Commissioner Howard, your point is fantastic. I, Janet will not be able to provide full-time finance officer services. So I, but that's a great point and I'm glad you made it. Back to your question, Colt, yeah, I don't, I don't think we need one because, and we haven't discussed this much and I don't want to, but I'm not hands-off on the finance. Like I still have a standard that I require be met and that requires my involvement. And so it's not as if I am just have said, Janet, whoever, take it over. I want nothing to do with it. It runs through me and, you know, I, I. And so you're getting administrator involvement there. You take my involvement plus, yeah, the amount of time that Janet puts in. And I don't know what it's going to be on a week-to-week basis. I just know that it has worked. And we're getting done what we need to. And not only that, but you guys saw during the budget process, we're moving it forward. Like the organization is moving forward. It's not as if we're just treading water. I mean, we're planning for long-term financial success. And you guys sat in those meetings and saw that unfold before your eyes. So it's not as if Janet and I were doing just enough. It's, I think we can take this organization to great places frankly, so.
I think this can be a good example of how we operate or hope to operate here. We don't need two people. We need one and a fraction person to perform these duties well. And that's what we're, we're utilizing because it's the best way for the county, so.
It is. And, and the other thing that hasn't been mentioned, Joy's sitting back there, and I know Joy doesn't like attention, but Joy's a fantastic assistant. But Joy, she is not a paralegal. I mean, legal assistants and paralegals require kind of special training. And so until I get her that training, she is focused more on the finance portion of it. And she played a huge role in that budget and she's been fantastic. But that is a great resource that Janet also uses. So when we talk about how is Janet going to be able to get it all done? Like, well, Janet's effectively gained half of a staff member. I mean, Joy works just as much for her as she does me. And so, I mean, she's, Joy's kind of the unsung hero in all of this and that, you know, she's being utilized a lot as well. So, you know, she, Janet has additional resources at her disposal.
Well, unless anybody needs any more information, I imagine we should vote on this.
Well, and if, if, before somebody throws a motion out there, I don't, I mean, I think we're, it's not a question of yea or nay. What I'm hearing is it's a question of 20 versus 25. What I haven't heard is from you, Roy. What are your thoughts on this or do you?
Well, one thought came to mind to me is, is this a position, like a moonlight position where a person works outside their regular duties? And I think Janet is not that case as part of the organization and improving the organization and the compensation for that. It's, I could go with the 25.
And in terms of start date, you know, Commissioner Renaud has brought that up. And this is set for October. Is that, I don't, you know, I mean.
I don't have an issue with that. I mean, that's not a problem.
I don't have this problem October 1.
It's a one-year paid monthly, so I don't really see what you gain one way or the other moving dates, so.
You know, I, I've, I've talked to Janet and she understands that this will be evaluated at the one-year mark. And if it hasn't worked, then obviously we can go back and, and assess where we're at. I have absolutely no doubt that this is going to work, but it's a one-year agreement, so.
Well, is there a motion to approve entering into this contract with Janet Paddock for services as a county finance officer?
I'll make the motion to approve the contract Janet Paddock has written.
I'd like to make a second.
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
Our fifth item of business pertains to County K-Works, our cooperative workers' compensation insurance pool we belong to. Their annual meetings in Overland Park on November 14th. And we need to select voting delegates. This is in conjunction with the annual Kansas Association of Counties event. So if you're planning on attending that or not, which I don't believe I'll be this year.
Does that meeting at the same time as the other one? Is that a, yeah, Roy says yes. Which?
Same time usually. I'll volunteer to be a voting delegate.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
All right. Would anyone like to volunteer to be an alternate voting delegate?
Rick?
That's fine.
All right.
So Roy's going to be the delegate and Rick will be the alternate?
That sounds like it. Ready to vote on that?
I'll make the motion that Roy Dunn be our voting delegate at the K-Work annual meeting and that Richard Oglesby be our alternate.
A second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
Staff reports.
Yes. Last week, we discussed a request that we received from Mid-America Nutrition regarding, it was a $5,000 request for roof damage. And I believe it was Commissioner Renaud asked me to look into that a little bit more. And I had Joy do that for me. And what we found out is. out is they do have insurance on their roof. The issue is, it's this, it's just the life of the roof has ran out. They've been repairing it for several years now, and it's just, it's no longer useful or feasible to keep patching. And I guess it's one of these flat roofs with tar or rock or however they do that. Obviously, the, the four counties, or there's, or there's how many counties? There's one, two, three, four, five, six counties that they serve. We weren't able to get ahold of Miami County, so we don't know what they have agreed to donate. Coffee County just said no, that they weren't gonna donate to this. I don't know, and Joy, please step in, that Anderson County gave a firm...
They were talking about Monday, and I didn't hear back that they were leaning towards...
No, okay, and yeah, I thought they were leaning towards no. Lynn County, apparently, this is one of Lynn County's community partners, and so what they did was gave them a $5,000 advance on next year's contribution amount, and so that could be an option. But I believe that, and Osage gave the full 5,000. So Coffee said no, Osage said we'll give five, we couldn't reach Miami, Anderson County was leaning towards no, and Lynn gave them a $5,000 advance, which then they won't receive in the next year, so.
Derek, do you have in front of you what we gave them at budget time?
Well, I don't feel like we give...
The Services for the Elderly, which I think they're partners, right?
Ninety-some?
Wouldn't be a direct payment.
That's where the food comes from, so.
It was like ninety-some thousand, wasn't it, that we gave in budget?
Do we know what their structure is? Or is not-for-profit? I mean, is this a...
Chair, I don't, I don't have that in front of me.
Is this a business that makes food and sells it to, I mean, obviously, like, but isn't registered as a not-for-profit? Are they registered as a not-for-profit?
I believe it is.
Okay.
Roy probably has a better grasp on that from, but from what I understand, the Area Agency, Agency on Aging has contracted with them to provide the Meals on Wheels meals. So they are actually the hired, they, they are under contract with them to do that, and that contract has been discussed quite bit on being able to carry out and doing what they're supposed to be doing.
We have a meeting on October 17th, and I think that probably come up in the discussion because I think we just have a year contract for the meals right now to see how they perform and...
And this is the building out in the industrial park, the north. My personal opinion, I would be against just handing out the $5,000 to them. I could see going with something that, like Lynn County did, and I, they need it now for the roof and then take it off the budget at next budget time.
But if we don't give the money to them, we give it to Meals on Wheels.
We, we give the money to Services for the Elderly and we budgeted $198,139 for next year.
Which includes public transportation.
Yeah, that includes, yeah, that includes public transportation, too.
So we don't have any way Janet have no...
To separate it?
What gets funneled to this particular program.
My, my personal thought is not to do it either, and if anything, maybe after that October meeting with the Area Agency, we'll have an idea on what their thoughts are, if they're gonna continue to work with them or not work with them or whatever.
And I think that's a great idea to consider, is let Roy, if Roy's our, our member on that, go to that meeting and just, the discussion is had and, and, you know, we can...
So who actually owns the building? I don't know if they own it or lease it. I, I don't...
Yeah, I don't, I mean, they have insurance on it, so I don't, yeah, they might, and if they don't, I mean, obviously they're the one insuring it, so the owner has asked them to be responsible for the...
I believe they own their own building.
I think they do.
I think they do, too, and I'll find out here. Well, it sounds like we need more information before we can make a decision.
Yeah, well, and what we might do then is I'll just, we'll see how that meeting goes, and if you want to, Roy, you can give an update after that and maybe see what, what we wanna do. I don't believe that I have anything else.
They own their own building.
Okay.
Mid-America Nutrition Program, Inc.
Okay, okay, great. I don't have any other items.
All right. Sheriff, anything you'd like to say?
Good morning, and I know this has been talked about a lot, but through our budget process, I, as an elected official that has to prepare one, did appreciate the work that Derek and Janet did on this, and I, I support the decision that you guys made going forward here. I don't want to pretend to speak on behalf of all the department heads and elected officials, but at our meeting, there was pretty well, everyone supported the idea of this, of this decision, so I agree that it does help move the county forward, so I appreciated that. Also, just to let you know, I'm sure you're all aware that we did have a, an on-duty related crash with one of our, with one of our deputies yesterday, on what they, on an incident, and everyone is okay. And again, working with Joy, Joy takes care of our vehicle stuff through K-Camp and all of, all of that. I believe we have like three files on her desk right now, but she's, she was, she works with that very well, and we, we're getting that all taken care of. We do still have one person in the academy. He's at the wrap-up stage. I believe he's probably got about a month left, if I went back and counted the weeks right, so we're probably about four or five weeks out on his graduation as well, but we're, we're moving forward as well in the sheriff's office. But if any of you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Roy, you had on the jail. So are we back still farming out to jail or we?
We do have, I believe as of this morning, we still have nine farmed out. I know that this week, some of those are coming back, well, actually 11 farmed out, nine to one county, two that are over at a different county. The two that are farmed out at that county, those are not because of capacity reasons. Those are for, for other oper, reasons that they needed to be farmed out. As most of you are probably aware, when we house people, if they are witnesses or victims of each other's crimes and things, we have to keep people separated and things like that, and that's, those are the type of things that we have going that we'll never avoid. Those things will just come up, and those are two of them. The nine that were farmed out were because of capacity reasons, and we're working to get, to get those back, and I know part of them are coming back this week.
Eats into the budget pretty quick.
It does, it, it does eat into the budget pretty decent, so that's why we try to get them back as fast as we can. Thank you.
Thanks. Anything, Janet?
Nope.
Commissioners comments, board report.
I don't know if Susan has anything.
Do you have anything, Susan? Sorry, I didn't mean to skip over you.
Sorry.
Just a habit. It's not the first time I've been called crooked. First time, it's true.
Well, thanks for letting us take a few minutes of your time. I just wanted to, you know, everybody knows about the Car Show, Power of the Past, and I was lucky enough to be able to participate in all those things, but we've got a new event occurring, and I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. I know it's been brought to the city's attention, but it's Rush the Rails on the flyer. It's a big deal. Basically, the people that handle the Big Dirty Canza Race in Emporia were handpicked by the governor to basically celebrate the opening of the Flint Hills Nature Trail, so it's a big deal. The Dirty Canza brings people from all over the United States and all over Europe as well, so it sells out within, you know, seconds. And we got the final numbers from Leland. He's the gentleman that we're working with on the Dirty Canza, and he's actually the one putting on this race. They have close to 300 participants, which is a really big deal for this first event. It's brand-new, nobody knows what it's gonna do, so it's exciting to be able to be on the opening part of that. We're gonna, it's a unique event because we are involving so many communities. I mean, it, we're just a small little tip of the iceberg. I mean, this is a big race. It starts, obviously, it says it starts in Austin-Watamie and goes all the way to Council Grove. There's gonna be support teams all along that trail, so it's a big deal. We're excited to have a street dance to welcome everybody on the 6th of October. O-Town and Steve Norris Insurance Agency are putting that bill, and the street dance is gonna feature Katie and the boys. And what we're utilizing is OMA as the central point for everybody to come in and get their registration packets, their T-shirts and all that good stuff to get them enrolled in the rail, the rail itself, and then we're kind of closing down part of the street and street dance with music, and there's gonna be a open bar down there, so that should be a lot of fun, too. And then on Saturday, this is when we hope we really get the community involved to let people know that the trails are here and to welcome people into Ottawa. They're gonna be starting in Austin-Watamie, but they're all gonna be getting into our community probably eight to 10, depending on how fast they are, because this is a running race as well as a cycling race. So two groups of people moving through. We're hoping to maybe capture some of the lunchtime crowd. There's gonna be some food trucks, there's gonna be entertainment. It should be a good opportunity to bring kids down, bicycle safety, bouncy house. We're actually gonna install a new repair station for bicycles, and we're gonna have some demonstrations on how those will be used. So hopefully that'll give the community an opportunity to see that we're making lots of improvements on the rail trail. And I think one of the most exciting things for me personally has been the opportunity to collaborate with not only county, city, chamber, Main Street. You know, we're working with the Healthy Pathways, but the Ottawa Bike Club, and also, you know, the wonderful people who have donated so much to this event. We're getting cowbells to ring that people have donated, and it's just been a great opportunity. I think one of the things that this has really taught me is that, yes, we can all play nice together, the city, the county, the chamber, we can all play nice together, and look what a great thing we can do when we do that. We are still looking for volunteers. We've got Boy Scouts helping out, we've got National Guard, we have some of my volunteers at the Visitor Center are gonna be helping, but if you are interested in helping, we'd certainly love to have you. I think nothing makes you more proud of your own community when you're down there and people say this is a great place, and you really get that. I get a lot of that when I get to work at Power of the Past and the Car Show and things like that, so it's a real, really wonderful opportunity to get out in the community, experience a new event, and participate with the people that really support what we do. So, any questions?
Any sense that this might turn into an annual thing?
They are hoping that it's annual. I mean, we're billing it as that, and we're hoping that maybe we can do something like, we could start the runners here and, and so we could be a part of the opening ceremonies, and I think that would really help our community. We're kind of in the middle right now, but we have been picked to basically register everybody. So on Friday night, you know, we could have a nice influx of people who have never been in this community before. I'll actually be working at OMA, helping with the registration. I'm gonna be handing them some wonderful information about Franklin County and all that we have to offer here, so I think it's gonna be a great opportunity to get people into our community who have never been here before. And we're talking, the Johnson County crowd is going to maybe take a look at these, this race before they would take a look at the Dirty Canza, just due to the nature of the difficulty of the Dirty Canza, so we think this will be a great opportunity and a good family opportunity as well, so appreciate your time.
How are your numbers out there at the Visitor Center for your volunteers? You back up to pretty full or...
You know what? They've been great. They stuck with me through all the changes, and I've worked with them, and they're great people, and, and right now, you know, I've got coverage, so I'm pleased. It's, it's working pretty well. We can always use more people. We actually had, were, received some assistance through the leadership Franklin County, and I'm trying to work with them to see if they would be interested in seeing what we do out there at the Visitor Center. I think it'd be a great opportunity for them to see what it is that we do, what people ask when they come to Franklin County, people that are new, because if they're gonna be the leaders of this community, they need to know what people's first, you know, impression is of our community.
Pass on to them, but we really appreciate them, too.
They're great, and I'm hoping Derek will allow me to have kind of a little thank you. We usually do a thank you dinner around first part of November, just basically thanking them for their service. When you look at how many hours of unpaid assistance I have, someone opened up at 8:30 this morning because we had someone running the room. You know, you, you don't just get that because you ask nicely, and, and they really truly believe in their community, and we should be very proud of them, so I feel very lucky to work with them. Anything else?
They're gonna...
Rush the Rails, come out and see us, it should be fun.
Are they gonna shut down Main?
Yeah.
Are they gonna, are they gonna shut down Main Street trying to get all these people across?
Well, we are having a meeting this evening, this afternoon, actually in the, at the Chamber Office. It kind of depends on the numbers, and it's up to the police's call to make that determination. We have contacted all the people that are, would technically be affected, like the co-op during grain season. We've talked with them and said, look, we may have to potentially have a barrier here when the people are running through for safety's purposes, and then be able to open it back up. So I don't anticipate we're going to be closing down, you know, like we do with the Car Show, but there may be times when there are barricades up just to prevent people from getting run over. And that's where I come in, because I'll be standing in the, the road stopping people, so if you see me out there, don't hit me.
Screaming, "Don't hit a tourist," right?
Hey, it works for the cattle drive, so.
Thank you. Fishers, comments, board report?
I haven't been to anything since last minute.
I stopped by, day on the farm for a little bit yesterday, and a lot of, a lot of third graders out there and a lot of participation with the FFAs and that sort of thing, and a great event out at Sylvester Ranch.
I attended, I have attended the hospital meeting and toured the new emergency facility. It's coming along. It's gonna be really, really nice, really good thing for this community, and they're pretty much on schedule. I think, I believe I heard October thrown around, so that's all weather-dependent at this point. Finances are right where they should be, and nothing much other than that to, to report from the hospital, so. All right. We have requests for an executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception statute for 15 minutes. This would include the, Derek, the administrator and the board?
Time you wanna go in?
Do we wanna take a bathroom break?
Yeah.
Might as well. All right. Let's go in at, as that clock reads, 9:43. Go ahead and vote on it now, or make a motion and second?
Make a motion, we go into executive session at 9:43. For 15, you said?
Yeah, and if you wanna read in your motion, just what I've...
For the elected, I don't have that list.
Clear bar.
Going to executive session, discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception. Okay, for 15 minutes, beginning at the 9:43.
Yeah.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Back out of executive session. No actions taken, no decisions were made. I think we'd like 10 more minutes to finish our discussion. Be looking for a motion to enter into executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception for 10 minutes with the board and the administrator. Somebody like to make a motion to that extent?
I make that motion.
Would there be a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right? We're back out of executive session. No actions taken, no decisions were made. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.